Being past the appointed hour and a quorum being present, I declare the meeting in order. As is our custom, when we have an American flag, we salute the flag, but since none is available, let us assume by reference that we have done so. Are there citizen inquiries? Yes.
Well, since we don't have a microphone, I don't have to stand up today. Ellie James, Blount Mitchell Road. I would like to speak to the last sentence of the main motion of Article One, which basically is for any cost relative thereto.
Or take any action relative thereto.
This is where, when we had voted for the feasibility study for Winthrop, that language allowed money to be spent on Byleck Park. My concern with that language is that we vote for a quarter million dollars, we get a little bit into it, and then that money goes back to looking back at Byleck or back to Winthrop. What can we do for an assurance that would be contained in the main motion that would severely limit any of that $250,000 to be spent on Doian only?
Well, this has been reviewed on repeated occasions since it was originally drafted. I think that it, the intent, which is warranted, is fairly constrained. The phrase "or take any other action thereto" is a common locution that's added to most warrant articles, so that within the four corners of the article, reasonable movement can go forward. So I don't think that "or take any other action relative to thereto" is, opens the door for excessive redeployment of funds. I would have to go back and check under what circumstances the money's walked around.
Now, we went over this back under the feasibility study, and you were chair of the committee at that time.
Mm-hmm.
And we went over that, and we even emailed within that to discuss that. And because that language in the main motion was contained, you told me that that allowed the school committee, the school building committee, to spend money on looking at Byleck. And so if that language could allow that at that time, that language could allow that at this time. And I want to make sure that if we vote for a quarter million dollars for Doian, that that money is spent on Doian only. And that last sentence allows that to happen, allows that money to be spent elsewhere. And I want either that language changed or deleted, whether it's a pattern of practice or not. This is how we wound up spending money on Byleck Park before we even had any kind of authorization from the town that the school could use it.
Yeah, I would suggest that there are two levels of specificity. One is the language within the article on the warrant, and one has to do with the specificity contained in the motion, which actually falls within the four corners and is voted at town meeting.
Exactly, and that's what we did under the feasibility study.
No, it was, it was the motion as presented that apparently allowed that broader interpretation.
No, the motion is amended or amended at town meeting.
This is the, this is the article, the motion.
Will contain that language because it did under the feasibility study. And I want to make sure we don't get railroaded again, voting on a quarter million dollars to spend on Doian, and then halfway through, we do a 3D and 360, and we wind up spending money on something else. I want an assurance on that. And that last sentence, that last part of the sentence does not, which does not make me feel comfortable, that that money's only going to be spent on Doian, because we've been here before on the feasibility study.
Can I ask a question? Let me say one more thing about the language which is contained. And because Ms. Breaker was more intimately involved in this today than I was, this has gone before the legal counsel at MSBA, and they required through legal counsel that we use the template that was used in the previous language, the date of which I don't have in mind.
It was September 2014, uh, special town meeting.
Will you speak that please? We don't have a microphone today.
The special town meeting in 2014.
Okay, yeah, I know this.
Yeah, and, and it is that language, that template, that they have imposed on the language at this time. The one thing that I am certain of, if, two things, if the motion varies dramatically from the four corners of this, you can't vote it at town meeting, or if you do, it doesn't go anywhere. Two, the language by amendment within the four corners can reflect something that is not explicit or exactly the same as the article, but may fall within the four corners. So it is the language of the motion that is really, deserves the critical, uh, looks in.
And this is what I'm talking about, because you and I emailed on this at that time.
Yeah, I must confess, I don't recall the exchange of emails, but in general, what I'm telling you, I believe to be factual and the truth.
This is, but this is, that's the same exact language that was at the end of the main motion at town meeting for the feasibility study.
And I don't believe that was the language that opened the door.
Or any cost relative thereto.
This doesn't say that, "take any action relative to thereto."
So you think "take any action" and "cost" is going to make the difference?
I-
We've been put weak before, I don't want us to get put weak again. I'm just asking, how can, how can we be assured that quarter of a million dollars is going to be spent on Doian and Doian alone? What can we get as an assurance of that, aside from, as Judge Millian likes to say, your flapping gums?
Well, I must confess, the, the evolution of this project has been, I believe, as much a surprise to you as it has been to me. That said, I believe participation at the town meeting on the 19th, and I will be, and I have and will make a note, to refer to this conversation on the town meeting floor, ask questions of those who make the motion, to understand the, the narrowness or the opportunity to expand it that may be contained in this article.
You don't do that, you're not going to call your-
Believe me, I, I, I know what I'm setting myself up for. Any other citizen inquiries?
Mr. Chairman, full go, can you push your vote?
And since we don't have a microphone, would you bellow, please? Thank you.
Sure. That gets me pretty loud.
Loud and brief, that's what we want.
Thank you. I'm looking at the warrant. This is as presented this morning? When was this printed?
I figured you'd know my computer.
I know there is at least one extra copy up here, if you'd like to see it.
Well, I don't see anything here about the petition.
About the, go to the second page. Hopefully, there's a second page. And the way mine works, I actually have a third page. Do you have a second page?
I have a second page.
It's relatively brief, I believe. It's a couple of paragraphs. While you're reviewing that, any other citizen inquiries?
I'm, Joni Safran, 114 NAC, Florida. I'm just looking at a Facebook post that state will let towns stay with two schools with no time penalty proponents, and there's a story about going back to the school, two school thing. So is this the case, or are we going ahead with one at one?
Well, you, you raised questions that I thought were, were raised and dealt with at our last meeting when we agreed to go forward with the warrant. As I understand it, and there are people in the room more expert than I am, so I will ask you eventually to weigh in on this, the, the opportunity for the town to go through a period of investigation, determine that a particular proposal is not appropriate, either because of size, or location, or traffic, or attitude on the part of the voters, going back to the MSBA is not precluded, it can be done. And as I understood the discussion, it could be done with relative inconvenience, and the town would not be at a disadvantage if they went back and said, "Look, we've done all the research, nothing required, we believe that a change in direction is appropriate at this time." And they would permit that within their guidelines and procedures. Yes. That has nothing to do with this, however.
But if we're going to town meeting to vote $250,000 to do some site planning or investigation at Doian, and, I mean, is this a viable thing that's going to happen? Is it going to go back to square one? If it gets voted down at town meeting, is that the path that people are going to be taking?
Well, Mr. Engel was quite eloquent about this, and said that if it is voted down at town meeting, that would seem to him to set aside the Doian option, then the question is, what's left? You can put a big school at Winthrop, you can put a small school at Winthrop, you could jawbone the selectmen and perhaps revisit Byleck, but as of the no vote for an additional $250,000, that would seem to put a period on further investigation at Doian.
So if we vote that appropriation, then Doian is it? This is only close to four hours ago, that's why I just happened to see it.
Yeah, this has been a rapidly evolving story, but I believe that, that what Mr. Engel described is probably correct. This is an opportunity for the voters to go up or down on big school Doian. And if they don't appropriate an additional quarter of a million bucks to investigate that, that doesn't seem like it's going to go forward. There is a small amount of money left over in the kitty, I think it's 100 and-
Forty-three?
Something, 100,000, that could be used to investigate other possibilities. And the school committee allowed as how, and I'm, I'm seeing a school committee member scowl in the back of the room, allowed as how that some school money might be used if there were no other town resources available. A lot would have to be returned to the schools eventually, but small amounts could be made available to continue the process if the Doian option failed.
And my, my concern is that we're going to end up with nothing.
And I think that's a real risk.
Sure.
But I don't think the risk is there.
Well, hopefully not.
Well, you've been around town a long time. It took us a long time to get a new middle school, high school, and I lived through those battles for almost 20 years, or more, again, experts in the room, closer to it than I am. I think this process, in some respects, has moved along rather quickly. We've got some designs, we've got some ideas, and more than anything else, we've got the town's attention. Now, in the process, I think we've created some coalitions and some partisan behavior, and in a, in an age, as I mentioned to the school committee, of polarization, it's hard to have a, an open and friendly debate among friends. And I, I think this is one of those areas in which there are no, no villains. I think that there, there are honest disagreements and points of view about what should be done in the future.
I, I agree-
And we're living through it.
I, I agree with that statement, but I'm just, I, I am concerned that we're going to end up with nothing.
That, I, I've worked with them such a long time, I agree with that, that's always a possibility, yes.
Question, question, a couple things. First, Kevin, I want to question back to Ms. Klue's comment about any action relative thereto, and the fact that we, it was dedicated for Winthrop, but we spent money at Byleck Park. We spent money, that was part of the feasibility study, right? That we had to study different sites, the money that we spent?
Correct, yeah.
So, so I, I guess part of my take on that is, some of the money was spent on Byleck Park, some of the money was also spent on Doian. And, I mean, we have, we have data, and study data from Doian, correct? And we can use some of that?
Yes.
Right? So, I mean, they did, like, for example, they did soil tests at Doian, maybe? Yes?
Yes, they did some. They did four test forms.
Right, so I'm not as concerned about the language, because it's, you know, if it's just, I, I don't want to get, I don't want to get sidetracked with saying it has to be just at Doian, because the money that we spent, that was set aside, wasn't just for Winthrop. So, um, so to me, it's six, one way half a dozen the other. As far as, I hope we can talk more, and I don't know when you want to discover, discuss it, but to talk about what we do and how we interplay the two articles, and how, how the discussion is, and how the board wants to relay this issue. Because there are certainly some people that I've spoken with who think that, you know, Doian is the only option, and that's what was presented, and that's it, and that's, the decision is done. I, I think some people aren't aware that this other article has popped up. I also think that some people don't understand, you know, there, there is this new MSBA decision, I don't know what you want to call it. So in, in some cases, I, you know, I've, I've always been nervous that somehow this could fail. At the same time, it's almost like there's some, I don't want to say forgiveness, but they're, they're providing some wiggle group that wasn't, we were, under the impression wasn't there before. So, you know, a week ago, two weeks ago, in my mind, it was, well, it was just a week and a half ago, right?
Well, yeah, if I could just say, I think, a year ago, when the school committee was discussing about great configuration, we asked our, we had the architects and the OPMs to talk to our project manager, MSBA project manager at the time, and he told us that, once you submit the PDP, which is the preferred preliminary design report, or program, preliminary design program, which we did last September, you are then now, that, that grade configuration is now set, and you can't go back and change it. And that's what we had understood for the past year. Well, we don't have that program manager anymore. We had a conference call on Tuesday, and we got a different, got a different report of what, what is available to the town. So-
What I, what I heard was, until the scope and budget are approved by the board-
Agreed, which is totally different from what we heard before.
It is not, it is not cast in stone.
Which is totally different from what we heard before, but that is there, so, you know, that, that puts out the, you know, this idea of, this potential of, of looking at something different. I would assume if we were, if the town did vote for the Doian, that the school committee would put words in their mouth, would, we would be continuing with that thing. If that got two-thirds approval, I don't know why we would be looking at alternatives if that received enough, received enough support for that funding.
Right.
So then whatever happens, the next one happens.
Okay, I'm, I'm trying to keep us on citizen inquiries. I think whatever the inquiry was, I hope we've responded to it. You were reviewing an article, are you satisfied that there's a second article now?
I've read it, and I wish the program were bigger, because I'm trying to reduce it to, to town meeting law, in a megaphone. I do have a question. We haven't talked about that paragraph, which is in there, as a citizen's petition, basically it's for two schools. What happens, we go to town meeting, and that article shows, citizen petition for, et cetera, and they vote for two schools. I have two questions there. Is this vote going to be a secret ballot vote? And when it goes to the ballot, will it be a ballot vote two-thirds?
The two-thirds, and again, I would be, I stand willing to be corrected, because we are going to use a combination of sources, we don't have sufficient free cash at this moment, it'll be a combination of free cash and stabilization fund, it will require two-thirds at the town meeting. That unless a citizen works with the town moderator to create a mechanism at town meeting for a secret ballot, it will be a voice card ballot.
All right. Then it has to go to ballot after that?
Because eventually, there will be bonding required, and that will be done as a debt exclusion, so-called, which puts it beyond Proposition Two and a Half limits, and that will have to be done at the ballot box.
So-
We're not there yet. We're just talking about quarter of a million bucks right now.
And will that be a two-thirds vote?
Uh, yes, because of the combination of sources we have to use to get the money. Yes, question?
Linda drives, Colonial drives, and you probably know what my question's going to be, but, well, I filed a complaint with the Attorney General's Office.
Yes.
And I don't know how you come up tonight with closing the warrant, because you already closed it on May 24th, and you've never reopened the warrant. Only the selectmen can reopen the warrant. So you voted unanimously to close that warrant that night, unless you met an open meeting, that I'm not aware of. So, and I was surprised, I read, I watched the meetings last night, and it seemed that the urgency here was because of school vacation. And this is a town-wide, huge budget issue that affects many people that are not affected at all by school vacation. So I was really surprised to see what an impact school vacation had on trying to push this through. This warrant is closed, and to even discuss putting the citizen's petition on it is almost, I was like, stressed this time. You need to fix that, you need to open, have an open meeting, reopen that warrant, and then you could allow you those things. But as of right now, unless there's something I've missed, and I've really tried to, you know, look into this, you closed that warrant on Wednesday, May 24th. A mobile call does not qualify in any way, under an open meeting law, to notify citizens. And many people did not get that. I mean, I called somebody tonight to offer my rights to this meeting, they didn't know what I was talking about, and you're a relatively involved person in town. So, that's my issue, why waste all this time talking about this one whole thing? Really, it doesn't almost exist. I did speak to the Attorney General's Office, I have known the steps, that's why I seem to practice aware of it, because he and I have discussed the steps that are involved. One thing they did stress to me was, if it was shown that it was intentional not to keep that warrant open, it would be a whole different ballgame in their viewpoint. Their goal is to have citizen input, their goal is to let the public know what is going on. And Mr. Whitmore touched on it tonight. A lot of people don't know anything about any of this. People aren't all savvy, you know, Facebook, and Mr. Muldoon's postings on the internet. They don't know that the citizen petition is even out there, they couldn't come here tonight to comment on it. And the whole goal with all of this is public participation. Once again, we're seeing, like, the non-transparent, I'm Googling the opposite of transparent, trying to find the right words to use, but I was just appalled, I have to be honest, that the town manager Googled that man that spoke up the other night and said, "There are seven, the warrant needs to be open for seven days," and she just sort of dismissed him. And I will tell you, she made the board look kind of silly by you guys listening to her. Mr. Kraft, Mr. Rosh, you had valid points, you brought up very good points, and you were on the right track there. But for some reason, I guess to speed along, because it's school vacation, it became unanimous. And I personally don't understand how a town manager, a veteran town manager with access to a town council, did not come to that meeting on the 24th with all the information that everybody asked about that night. She should have had that down pat. One of you select people did say, how much money is at stake, I think it was Ed, this is a big ticket item. So that's my citizen's queries. Why are you even doing this tonight? Because you closed your warrant.
Um, two things. First of all, I'm sensitive to the issues that you've raised. I'm part of the group that you were concerned looked silly the other night. There was a certain amount of pressure to move forward because of presumed timelines that were brought to the selectmen, we were aware of, moving forward and trying to get things done as quickly as possible. Once that was set in motion, we have spent time reviewing the, the procedures, and I don't want to get into this too far tonight, but one of the things that we do have to do is respond to your open meeting law issue, and I'm going to put that on the agenda for next Monday night. When I got back to you, I said, I said May 5th, it's with June 5th. I haven't, I haven't, the way this month is going, I haven't moved into June yet, so we're, it'd be June 5th, we'll have it as one of the items, and the board will have to respond to your complaint. The issue that I raised with town council at some length was, there did not seem to be a defect in the open meeting law. What you really seem to be concerned about is Chapter 25 of the bylaws, which has to do with the seven-day period.
Well, that's, that's not completely accurate.
Well, but I'm, I'm just, this is the way, this is the way we-
I mean, my, my concern, I might-
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure there are many concerns, but in terms of the complaint itself, we did not seem to, we did not seem to have a defect in the open meeting aspect of our meeting. Whether or not there was clarity with regard to the seven days and the communication thereof, that was not as smooth as it should be.
Well, maybe I need to make myself clear, because that is not what it is, though. My concern is, you voted 5-0, closed on the 24th.
It was also raised by a member of the audience, that whether we chose to close it or not, there was a bylaw that kept it open for seven days.
And the town manager shushed him, and you voted 5 to 0, and you've never reopened any public session that I know of. That's my concern.
What we did was apparently something we couldn't do, so the, so the warrant remained open for those seven days. We have gone to some length, not adequate in all respects-
Well, it's not-
All lengths to let people know that indeed, by bylaw, it has been open, and tonight, we are about to approve a warrant which includes one such citizen's petition.
But it's not legal, Bill, you haven't reopened that warrant, it was closed.
What we, what you point out is, we took an action we couldn't take.
Right, people do that all the time, you have to go back and fix it, and people do that-
And because we couldn't do it, it didn't close. However-
No, that isn't true, you voted to close.
No, you closed it.
You voted last night.
We took an action, I'm not going to get into the legal peculiarities of this, but we, we, I know, and at this point, we need to respond to your open meeting law violation issue. That was what your complaint is with the AG, and we have a certain, we've got to compartmentalize this, we have to, we have to respond to that in a certain period of time. And we will take that up as an item at our next meeting, not tonight, the next meeting. Tonight, the belief is, and I'll get to you in a second, sir, that if someone had followed the bylaw and tried to put a citizen's petition on the warrant, indeed, there was a period of time, the only one that we are aware of, for whatever reason, was the one which has been included, and I would hope will be included tonight. There also, secondarily, within my experience in Ipswich, and I've been asking town council and others to explain me how they did this, the Board of Selectmen has exercised a prerogative to add to the warrant after it has been closed.
And you never reopened it? It's closed, that's okay.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying, suppose it was closed, if we take action tonight to add that citizen's petition, it is within common practice of this board to do that.
So what have you, vote to reopen it tonight? And then you had to wait-
And we have to wait seven days.
And then you let it be open for seven days, and everything's legal eagle. This is, this is, this is the stuff that brings people like us before you, because we, we see this, and we see it was a blatant, blatant, we don't care what you think, we're doing it. Now, you're, you're all over this article, like this is a legal thing to be doing, and it's not, because this has not been reopened. So I don't understand how you can go forward with what you're going forward with tonight without reopening the warrant.
Mr. Kraft, if, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I think the main concern here is that people were very confused at the end of the meeting on the 24th, and believed that the selectmen said that the warrant was closed. So you've had a couple of us that know what's going on, and could follow the bouncing So, you've got a couple of us that know what's going on, and can follow the bouncing ball, but you've got other people out there that don't. And when you close that warrant, people that don't know the bylaws, the charter, open meeting laws, they don't know all of this information in their head, and sadly, some of us do. They understood that the warrant was closed, and that shut the door on any citizen's petition. So the concern for me personally is that people did not understand that the warrant was still open because you said it was closed, so that closed the door for anybody else that's not in the know to come forward with citizen's petition. And there's your error, is that you violated the town bylaws, and you shut the door on the citizens to break forward citizen's petition for the June 19th special town meeting. And that's, and that's the problem.
Excuse me? Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Joe Burke, Bushnell Road. I too was at that meeting last week, and I obviously have most respect for the open meeting law. It's my understanding that when two conflicting versions of the rules and regulations about how a warrant can be opened were presented, that the town manager and the Board of Selectmen, I, I think the way the motion was teed up originally by Mr. Rauscher was to close it that night, but if town council reviews it the next day and says it needs to be opened, and so, and I think that's what's passed. I think I checked on the audio recording records of that meeting document, and let the cabby out in there to keep it open.
But they can't do that, that's not-
Well, that, that I don't know, but I understand, that was my understanding-
They could say that, but that's not legal.
And I think that, I do not think this was closed by conspiracy. I don't believe that. And you said it's the intention that's, that's the important thing. I don't think there was an intention not to include any reasonable effort on the part of citizens to participate in this town meeting.
At first, I agree with you, Bill, because I didn't think it was a conspiracy either. I thought it was an oversight, and I fully expected the next day you'd post an emergency meeting, get three people together, reopen it, get going, and do it the right, correct way. But after watching that meeting, there was an awful lot of discussion about that, and Mr. Rauscher was quoted as saying, "We have to make some sacrifices here." And legal meetings aren't things of sacrifice. Stuff like this room, or no AC, those are sacrifices? That meeting legally was closed, and what Keaton Stibert said is correct, but the town manager doesn't have the power to just reopen that based on what she looks into the next day. Those five people are the only people who have the power to do that, and they haven't done that yet.
Well, very briefly, we have been advised by council that announcing that petitions would be accepted if filed within seven days of the board's vote. And by accepting and including the petition that was filed within the seven-day period, the board has cured any defect in the board's 524 vote. Now, we can all disagree one way or another, but as chairman, I have a certain set of procedures that I'm going to recommend to my board. It is not without a lot of pain and anguish that we've gone through that today, and at the end of the day, it is believed that, first of all, there was no open meeting law defect. Even though the board, there has been one alleged, and the board needs to take action to review that within a certain timeframe, it will be on the agenda next Monday at our meeting. The defect, if there is one still, has to do with the bylaw, which has to do with the open period. And the remediation of that defect is to accept any petition which is brought forward during that seven-day period, which the board, I believe, and we'll find out when we vote, is prepared to do that. If not, then we've got a whole other set of problems to deal with.
And, uh, they're sent out by a RoboCall, and I usually get all of them.
It was also posted on the school website, it was on the town website, I mean, there were, there were efforts within, within the range of the town's ability to communicate. It was not, it was not kept intentionally secret from the town. Champion?
It's a great point you're bringing up. It's fairly important for us to pay attention to these things and learn from them, and do it, make sure we avoid mistakes going forward. It really, at that night, was a question of special town meeting rules, bylaws versus annual town meeting, and interpretation of those, because they're actually quite different. You have to have annual town meetings, that's the thing. You don't have to have special town meetings.
You don't have to do that.
All right, so let me just finish there. And the concern was a group that wanted to file a, clearly made, clear that night, they wanted to file a citizen petition article for town warrant, and they had been allowed to do that. So, I just, I understand the concern, I understand maybe we could have done it better, but there's, I don't see the harm in the process we're in right now, because all, all interests have been served.
Well, you just say "a group." How do you know about the group that doesn't even know this meeting's going on tonight?
Well, they succeeded-
You're assuming that the group is the only group that's involved. What Kelly tried to say is the group that assumes it was closed that night, to be bringing on, because they assumed it was closed.
Well, the people that asked, wanted to obviously to sign for fellow citizen's petition, vocally said, made it clear, "We want to do this." Initially, they were told, "They can't," and then it became gray, and like 12 hours later, they were informed, "Yes, you can."
Right. That was just one group, is my point. The whole point of this law is to open it to any group that might be interested.
And, and I'm going to call this discussion now to a halt. The board will take whatever action it takes. I think it's been important to air and to hear what the concerns are. I, I would agree, exactly what your language wasn't as slick as it could have been, I would agree with you. As I pointed out at the meeting, when I reviewed the tape, I hadn't realized I'd said it, but I want to reinforce the fact that this is something that got started in a previous administration, and we're working, we're working through the process here, and I believe that the, the larger issue of moving the school building process forward is something that, as I read the town, is something either we want to get it over with once and for all, we want to move forward, we want to get, stop hearing about it. So I think that the timing is not inappropriate, it has not been a secret that these various options are out there, and this is a way to bring, as Mr. Engel pointed out so eloquently, the issue to what we would hope would be a good cross-section of the town, and hopefully we will explain what the implications are by various votes at the town meeting with regard to one or the other of these articles. Last question.
To your point of open meeting law, right, you stressed that.
Yeah.
I say, and I said it last week, last week's meeting was, should be voided, because the previous week, the Board of Selectmen had a unannounced meeting from the SPC sitting in front of, through you, Mr. Mutafian and Mr. Rauscher. They came in and sat down, unannounced, it was not on the agenda, and the conversation, dialogue went something to the effect, "We would like to have a meeting on the 24th." This is on the 15th, they're asking for a meeting on the 24th, and they were not on the agenda that night. So I say, that particular night was void. If that night was void, that wouldn't mean, the night of the 15th, I have a few contentious lists, three people from the SPC came in and wanted to talk, and there was conversation back and forth between the chair and Mr. Mutafian, and they agreed, "No, yes, no, yes," and then all of a sudden, "Yeah, okay, we'll have a meeting." If it wasn't on the agenda, it shouldn't have been discussed, and it shouldn't have been referred to last week. So that would mean last week was out of line, because the previous week was out of line. Now, that's another tool for you, and another tool for, uh-
Okay. Comments from the board, please?
Just, on that point, so, that discussion happened under new business? And on our agenda, it says, under new business with the asterisk, "All business not reasonably anticipated 48 hours in advance of the meeting." We didn't know, we weren't planning on having that conversation. If we had, it would have been on the agenda. So that particular conversation fell, fell under new business. So we got through our agenda, and then when we got to new business, is when we brought up the, the SPC about having a meeting in June. So, if, if we had, you know, pigeonholed that particular conversation an hour into the meeting, not under new business, I wouldn't disagree with you, but under new business, when Chairman Rauscher says, "Do we have anything under new business?", that's when we brought up the subject of, we need to talk about whether or not we want to schedule a meeting next, whatever the date is, May, whatever, to discuss a special town meeting. So, that's where it falls under. And on our agenda, it does say, you know, under new business, "All business not reasonably anticipated 48 hours in, in advance of the meeting." So we were fine having that conversation, because it was a last-minute conversation.
That's a great answer for you. But you realize how many times I've sat, been sat down at the Board's Selectmen meeting? Because I wasn't on the agenda. When I would go to speak, they'd say, "No, you're not on the agenda, sit down." I have a seat.
I'm not, I'm not sure what you're, you know, what you're referring to, Phil, on that. This is, you know, this was under new business. So that's where it fell under.
All right, we're talking about spending 60, jump to 65 billion.
I'm not disagreeing with you.
Okay, if the rules can tell you both to sit down, I think we've gotten it. Obviously, there was, there was a sidebar conversation that led, in Mr. Mutafian's mind, to new business. You feel that it was somehow not on the agenda? Keep record of that, because when all this goes to court, that will be evidentiary material. Are there any other, are there any other citizen inquiries? Short, sweet, and to the point?
Yes, sir. And I'm happy to see that this two neighboring schools' citizen petition did get an opportunity to be on the town warrant, but I question the line, Mr. Chairman. I understand citizens' rights to be able to say, "Should town meeting recommend the school committee to propose a Massachusetts school building or to build a school on the Winthrop site no greater than 490 students? And identify and commit funding to refurbish the Doyon School?" That can't take place. You can't go, you can't go to a town meeting and, and have a citizen petition article, somehow commit the school committee to identify and commit funding to refurbish the Doyon School.
And I would expect at this special town meeting, you will bring that up. Good, thank you very much. Citizen petitions, and I've been told this repeatedly, and I have complained and felt that we could save time if we made slight editorial changes, and I have been told that citizen petitions are invalid. What they, what citizens come forward with as their petition is what goes on the warrant. Whether I don't like the locutions involved, or the intent, where that's what it is, and that's what we're going to go with.
Understood, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments from board members?
Yes.
Yes, please.
So I have two questions. Number one, the warrant that we were handed tonight, Article 1 says feasibility study funding for Winthrop School, and identifies the Winthrop School located at 65 Central Street.
I think, I, I think, think, my, my guess is that's because that's the school that's being replaced.
Well, obviously, it's the wording the MSBA required.
Right, but I'm saying, but it doesn't say feasibility study funding for a Doyon School, it's for Winthrop School, because that's-
I, I understand, but we have a different article written, MSBA reviewed it and said you have to use the same wording as what was used three years ago, because you're looking to do something-
Right, because that's the school that's being replaced.
It's just because it's legally-
Right.
That, that's what they, that's what they agreed to, and that's what they have to-
It's the legal counsel.
I tried to make a point of the fact that, and I, and I really apologize for this, because I hate to be in a position where Ipswich, as a small town, is constantly saying, "Our hands are tied, or we can't do something that seems perfectly reasonable." In this case, this was pretty well dictated by their legal counsel.
Well, it's very misleading to me, because if I received this in the mail as something that I want to go and vote on at a town meeting, I'm thinking that it's about Winthrop School.
I can see where you might believe that. So the burden on the town, and the school committee, and the school building committee, and anyone who's here tonight, is to help explain to anyone in town that although it may refer to Winthrop, it is an artifact of the requirement, because that's where it started, although in the motion, which hopefully will be published by the local news and others, and if we get ICAM back on target and available to us, the motion and the intention will be clearer to the town.
Can I make this objection?
By all means.
Thank you. Under the summary, which we know can fluctuate quite differently from the specific language of the main motion, when this is published, could the summary in fact explain, Kevin can, Kevin can handle this one? If the summary could explain that the MSBA required the same language, but that this is relative to Doyon.
The Doyon location.
Right. If there could be some kind of language in the summary-
So noted, I'll take that.
That'd be awesome.
One way or another, we'll have an introductory sentence or a prelude.
I think the first paragraph of the summary in the last paragraph, I do that, we certainly could tee it up in some way.
I think to highlight is not a bad idea.
That was my easy question.
Oh, good. Your second one?
So, I have questions about the process, and last week. I didn't have a computer in front of me last week, but I certainly read the bylaws many times since that meeting. And I don't see why there was any confusion on the part of the board or the town manager.
Linda, could you speak up?
I don't-
Yell.
I don't, I'm sorry.
In the old days, people used to put rocks in their mouth and go yell at the ocean? That's how they explained-
So, I don't understand why last week there was so much confusion about the process, and about what our bylaws say, because it's pretty clear to me, under special town meetings, number one, well, it's not number one in here, but the first thing that came to mind is that we have to give three calendar days notice to, of our intention to open a warrant. And I don't recall seeing that. I recall seeing an agenda that said discussion of potential town meeting in June. That was my first thing. My second thing is, it certainly says, under special town meetings, that the warrant will remain open for seven calendar days. So, when I got home and saw this, I was confused as to why there was any confusion to begin with last week. And then the rush to get this done by, to have this town meeting on June 19th, I don't, I don't understand why we can't have it later in June to accommodate having meetings that open and close the warrant under the proper bylaws. Is it because the PAC isn't available, or? I'm sure that between June 12th and June 30th, that there's a night that we could have this town meeting.
I believe that Mr. Murphy was, was closer to the discussion of the timing of this. What was the, the impetus for this time?
Well, it was, it was, it was, it was the ability to meet the, the schedule ahead of us, to be able to submit to the MSBA that if we were going forward with a Doyon project, we have two submissions we have to do, and our goal is to try to get them in so that we're voting in November for this project, versus letting it slide into December, January, February, to have another meeting, have another special town meeting in the middle of, of the winter. So, that was primarily the thing for the push for a June meeting. And I'm the one who said about having it during, before school lets out, not so much allow parents to be there, but not to let it slide into July when we all go on vacation, and that people are just not here to be able to, to partake in this town meeting. So, it wasn't more toward parents, it was more toward that we all go on vacation, and the earlier we have, the sooner we have, the better off we may have in large participation.
But to, but to have another week or two to accommodate the process, I mean, I, I feel uncomfortable. I, I, I want to go through with the Doyon project, I really do, and I want to see it happen as soon as we can. But I feel like we have this cloud over us, and even the chairman last week said that people might even feel like they were being hustled. And I've talked to people this past week that that is the case. People are concerned about this, and I am a process person, and I, if, if I was sitting in the audience and there was an issue about process, I'd be the first one at the microphone. be the first one at the microphone. And I just don't understand why we can't start this town meeting process over again for another week or two to accommodate these dates so that there isn't that cloud over this whole process. That's my comments.
You know what? I have to say this.
I'm out. Yes.
I have to say this. You know what we would love to see? You who sit there after the comments, the research, everything that's been done, why can't you just sit there and say to us, "We're sorry. We screwed up. Based on information and advice from our seasoned town manager, we made a mistake." You won't even admit to that. You won't even say, "Sorry, we screwed this up. Let's fix it." And by reopening it and leaving it open for seven days, postponing the town meeting from June nineteenth to another date, is fixing it. You don't seem like you want to fix anything here tonight, and that's troubling, very troubling. Get all kinds of excuses, but nobody will say, "We did something wrong."
I really don't think that, at least speaking personally, I have any problem admitting if I've done something wrong. I have, I'm not clear that I have. I do think that there was, as I understood it, and I would defer to Mr. Matafian, he was closer to the decision that brought this to the board, that I was led to believe there was a certain urgency to do this for technical reasons in order to keep it alive. As my votes have indicated, I have priorities that may be different than Doian, but I do think that the citizenry has a chance here and, and should have a right to somehow come together with a reasonably straightforward, clearly-written article that everybody can understand and not tinker with, and their voices heard around a topic which I think has almost gotten out of control.
It is out of control. Totally out of control.
And, and I think that's a shame. I think that the town had an opportunity to benefit from a fairly large amount of state money. I think the town, in its way, has been limping and lurching toward a final decision of some sort. And I'm not sure in my mind what putting this off another several weeks is going to do to improve on that situation. It may actually put a period on it and let either the school building committee, the school committee, or the rest of us just take a deep breath and say, "That's been settled."
Okay. Well, I don't think anybody's suggesting a several week delay.
Well, at this point, I can, I can assure you that if we were to set a time or a date or talk about a frame of reference for that, we don't know when the space is available. We don't know what the technical, the logistics are to make it happen. We are meeting on Monday night and at the direction of my colleagues. I would be happy, as chairman, to either postpone all of this and start again on Monday night, and whatever the consequences of that are, or, as I had finally made up my mind to do, is work toward a resolution of this tonight and hopefully satisfy the bulk of the citizenry of Ipswich.
I make it extremely agree.
I beg your pardon. Okay.
I make it extremely agree. I agree with you, Phil. I want to see this go along as best as possible. And I'll be honest, I'm a one Doian person. I'll say it up. But I also respect everybody else's opinions. But I want to see it move along correctly, and I don't want to see it being held up whatever we arrive at on this kind of a technicality. And I think that's kind of what Linda's alluding to. Another ten days to clean up some of the wording and this confusion and get it on the right path, we can at least feel we're moving ahead effectively and legally. That's my opinion.
Now, I hear that. I'm, I'm the kind of a rules guy. I'm not, I'm not really arguing against that. I think the rule that you're looking at and the process technically is not that flawed. Now, you may have a difference of opinion.
Not that flawed.
It is not that flawed. The defect in what we have done, the resolution of that, if it were to be adjudicated, it probably wouldn't even get that far. The resolution is, have we, have we conspicuously left someone with a petition out of the process? No. To our knowledge, there is no such petition sitting around that has not been presented. Now, we can say, "Well, they could have been..." Well, they could have been, but they weren't. The one petition which has come to our attention has been included. It's been, it's been certified, and there is no defect from the point of view of, is there a conspicuous group who have been left out of the process? No. Petitions, petitioners have been free to petition and it has been included. So, at a, at the most basic legal, technical level, I don't think the defect that you've pointed out is severe enough at this moment to warrant adjudication. That's why the difference between what we're arguing about, which is the bylaws, it's the Section twenty-five, versus the state open meeting law, which is a much different defect. We, we adhered to the open meeting law. What we did with it afterwards, you may not be happy with, but we did not have a defect in the way the open meeting law was carried out.
Should I say, yeah, I tend to agree with Bill on this one. We did get a petition. I mean, I, I, I think maybe we should have come out the day after and said, "Whoops, sorry. We made a mistake."
Yeah. It's all takes. At this point, that's all takes.
Right. So, I understand that. I think that making the robocall and saying it is open and getting the petitions in, I think, does help.
Doesn't satisfy the law.
But, let me keep going real quick. But I, I do think it's important that we do, we do have a, we do have a citizen petition on it, and I, I think, my other point is that this is, in, in, in some cases, this could be a very tricky issue because it's, it's a lot of money and it's controversial and it's been very polarizing. But at the same time, these are sort of right now up and down votes. It's either you want to trade, you want to move the funding over and move forward with Doian, or you want to make a recommendation through a citizen's petition to the school committee. And that's kind of it. And, and we referred to what Mr. Engel said, but it was, what I was also trying to get at too, is if you're, if you're in favor of building this school at Doian, then go and vote, and vote to transfer the money. If you're not, for whatever reason, if you think it should be a combined school by a lot park, if you think it should be two small schools, whatever, then just vote against it. You know? And, and I think in some cases, aren't opening this up again, and, and I understand that people have the, the right and the, the need to do a petition, but opening it up for other petitions, all that does is, again, it's, it's sort of like you're either in Camp A or Camp B, and all the other petitions would be in Camp B. So, so, we had it, we opened them up, and I don't, I don't see any other new petitions making a difference.
Now, I wasn't even speculating about new petitions. I think we have corrected what might have been a defect, and tonight, the board has its, has within its capacity to correctly close the warrant.
Can I ask a question?
We can take that action tonight.
Can I ask that at all?
Pardon?
Can I ask questions that's not related to that at all?
I would prefer that it be related, but, okay.
And it's just a real quick one. Have we verified that there are no track meets, basketball tournaments, cheerleading tournaments, or anything else going out at the IPAC so we have partying? Kevin?
Yes, except for any potential playoff tournament game.
Oh, good.
But it is, it is confirmed with other standard school events, the IPAC and the school of our experience.
Okay. Thank you.
So, here in, and I was a little bit surprised by the answer that we got last week from the town manager concerning the seven days. So, I think, and I apologize if I'm stumbling through this because I'm just trying to gather all my thoughts through here. And my motion is going to be as jumbled as what I'm saying here. But what I'd like to make as a motion, and someone's going to have to help me out with this, is whether or not we can, and this isn't the motion yet, so we need the language.
Well, let us, let us agree at some point to move on beyond citizen inquiries.
Yep. So, that's, all right. So, I'm going to make a motion to close citizens' inquiries.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay. So, now we're on to the, the next part of our agenda, which is the...
Close warrant for June nineteenth, twenty-seventeen, special town meeting.
Right. So, what my, what my motion is going to be is, is to, is if we can set aside the motion that we agreed to last week and open up a meeting for a future date. So, instead of the nineteenth, we go out to the twenty-sixth, which I think gives us enough time to, it's, it's seven days. We were seven days prior, so we're seven days now. It gives us enough data to post it and have seven days for people to add on to, if they want to make a citizen's petition, whether we get none or five or whatever, at least now, there isn't going forward a cloud over this meeting that I'd rather avoid. And I understand what you're saying, Billy, because I do think your, your yes or no vote on Article One is, is your citizen's petition. You're either for Doian or you're not. I mean, it's about as clear as you can be on this, on this particular subject. And whether it needs a citizen petition or not, I'm not here to judge that or not, but I agree with you, Meg. Next week's vote on, next week, nineteenth's vote on one tells everybody where you stand on this. But with that being said, I do think we have, I do think last week was about as jumbled as it could have been as a meeting. And I do think the town rightly or wrongly made as good an effort as it could to get the word out. I got the robocall, I got the email, I got the text. I did. I'm not lying about it. I'll show you on my phone. I got it. Right. So, it went out. Whether you got it or not, I don't know what to tell you, but it, it went out. And I don't, other than knocking on everybody's door, I'm not sure what else the town could do because if we had left the warrant open last week, the only people who knew the warrant was open were the people who were in that room that day. So, again, it goes back to, did we do enough to get the word out after it? I think we did. With that being said, I do think there is enough of a cloud over this that if we push it out seven days to the twenty-sixth, which I think we can do, then we, we, however, whatever the wording is, we get rid of last week's warrant vote, we open the warrant today, we vote to keep it open, and as much as I love meeting, we meet next week on Thursday, we close the warrant, whatever citizen's petitions are here are here, we have a vote, we have the twenty-sixth, school's out on the twenty-second. So, I don't know, I can't imagine the PAC's being used anytime after this twenty-second date. So, we'll have a place to meet. If we have to, we can meet on the beautiful turf field. It'd be, it'd be gorgeous and nice. Some at night.
Bring a couple of grills.
Yeah, bring some grills. We'll have a pack. We'll, we'll, we'll have a parfum.
A chance to heal.
Yeah. Somewhere else. But if someone's so, I need help with the language on that, Jen. I don't know how to, to...
Well, let's just make sure we have the dates that we're talking about.
Well, keeping in mind a couple of things, we have to give three days' notice of our intent to open a warrant. That's what it says in the bylaw.
It says, right below that, we finish that paragraph, unless, unless in their judgment, public interest, so you can...
Would suffer by such a delay.
Okay.
So, I think we're, I think we're okay with that.
Okay.
All right. I'm sure there'll be one or two people who may not agree.
Yeah, I mean, there were people who said we were okay last time too. But I, I think the, I think the intent is to do what in terms of the dates? Just help me with the dates here.
Okay. So, you're talking about the twenty-sixth.
January eighth. January eighth, you would need to meet.
So, we meet next Thursday, which would be the seven days. In fact, it's more than seven, right? Because we don't, is it seven calendar days?
Seven calendar days. It says the warrant for a special town meeting...
Well, it would have been seven because it was last Thursday we met.
Shall remain open for at least seven calendar days.
Why couldn't we open the warrant on the fifth?
So, if you open it on the fifth, it remains open until the twelfth, to the thirteenth.
And close, and we could still stay with the nineteenth?
No, because you have to publish it, and we miss publishing deadlines.
And with the special...
What is a publishing deadline?
It depends on the date, and if we're going to the Chronicle or the Sun News. So, once we get a little closer to narrowing a date, I can tell you the publishing deadline.
So, if we go to the twenty-sixth, so one week, one week later?
So, in order to publish for the twenty-sixth, it has to be closed and signed by the eighth at the latest.
Yeah. For a special town meeting, it, it's fourteen days prior to the time of holding any special town meeting.
So, if we open it today, we close it next on the eighth?
That's not enough days because the seventh, the second, the fifth, the sixth, the seventh, the eighth, you need the ninth, and now you're on Friday for seven days.
Can I?
Sure.
So, I, I get this effort of wanting to try to make what you're uncomfortable with better. I'm, as much or more so uncomfortable with scheduling a special town meeting, changing the date without having any other feedback from anybody in the tri board, the school committee, we're completely making a decision to reopen a warrant and have this whole thing without anyone else from the tri board. So, I...
But I, but I'm not sure we, we set the, we set the special town meeting...
I know, but I think there is some need to collaborate with it.
This is, yeah. I mean, this is a school, this is a school building, and we're going to go ahead and make a decision to reopen a warrant and change the meeting date while the school committees have their own meeting. I, I just, I'm, I'm uncomfortable with that.
Whatever you decide, the school committee will know about it tonight.
Right. But I don't, I don't want, I don't want the decision to be made without them. So, I...
I appreciate that.
Again, I come back to the defect that we're trying to correct, and is it severe enough? And the consequence is so negative that going forward with what we have, I, I'm still not convinced that just going forward isn't, isn't okay at this point. It isn't as if the, the problems that were created in the procedure are not going to be well-advertised, known, and everybody's going to know about it, and whatever, whatever shame comes to the Board of Selectmen will be clear. But given that, if we go forward and live with that, at least we have agreement. Everybody knows what the dates are. We have, we have gathered up whatever petition there was that could be put on the agenda, and we can go forward in a timeframe that school committee, Performing Arts Center, and everyone else is aware of. We know that is a timeframe, and frankly, a lot of people have been geared up with that in mind at this point. So, now we're going to say, "Well, some issues. What we're going to do is do something else." And those of you who go away at the end of June, July, whatever, it's going to be too bad. I, I don't think, I, I think by trying to make something better, we're not making it that much better. And right now, it's as bad as it can be, and I don't think that is a defect which is fatal for this project.
Well, I just think that we're, we're trying to make things conform to our own bylaws. And to me, that's important.
And, and we're going forward to this point, and there is a defect, but I don't think it is severe enough for us to all of a sudden turn everything upside down and do it all over again.
I'd like to applaud Ms. Allison because she's trying to work this for the people, the taxpayers in search, and you're using your judgment on it, Bill. And you represent all the taxpayers in search. I don't see what, what seven days is going to satisfy everything legally, and you feel confident, however this is decided, that you're moving ahead without that cloud over it. You are a board. We elected you. No offense to Kevin Murphy and to Mr., oh, Jackie Howard. We don't elect the Finance Committee, but the school board here appointed by you people and the school board. We elect you to make decisions for us, and...
And I, and I take that fiduciary responsibility as seriously as anyone, and I don't want there to be any confusion about that. And I keep coming back to the fact, you have identified a defect in the process. I don't think it is so fatal that it requires at this moment a complete overhaul of what has been set in motion. Now, we have a board, and they will make their, they will make a decision, and I will live with the decision of the board enthusiastically. But I don't think that the defect at this moment is so critical that it will, in fact, cause the result of any town meeting vote to be set aside.
Would it be possible to contact the other, the other boards between now and Monday and confirm a date for a different town meeting?
It's possible to do anything, I believe, even a town meeting, I've discovered.
We're only, I think we're only looking for another week or ten days, or...
Well, I'm, that's, yeah, I, I see what we're looking at.
Make things right. And just for the record, it's, it's not just parents of schoolchildren that vote on this issue. There are a lot of people in this town, and they don't all go away in July and August.
That's not, no kidding, yeah.
So I think we have to pay attention to everybody that's voting, not just the parents of the schoolchildren.
For the committee members.
Mr. Pratt, I ask you a question. The, when the last meeting took place, there was completely different language in Article One than is there now, right? Does that, that, just as a point, does that now not mean that in fact, the warrant wasn't closed? Because we have completely different Article One, and we have added two of the citizens...
We discovered is the warrant wasn't closed, period, end of story.
Citizens' petition.
What we did, we couldn't do. What we thought we did, we couldn't do. Okay, well, I'm waiting for a motion by a board. You've heard all of the pros and cons, there seems to be some energy in favor of setting aside what we planned for tonight, which was to close a warrant, which has two articles, one with the assistance, language with the assistance of Massachusetts School Building Assistance Authority, the other presented by petitioners. My assumption is that those two articles will go forward. Now, if someone put together an article in favor of one deadline, and deadlines have changed, do they have to go and redo it? Or do we agree that those are certified sufficiently so that they can be just added to the next warrant?
If they're certified, they should be added, doesn't that make sense?
But if you go out and get a, I'm not, I don't believe this, but if someone gets a, a petitioned article for a particular town meeting, which is then canceled, a new one is, and then opened, do you have to go out and redo that process, or can you just refer to the previous submission?
Okay, could I ask a question? I, I'm trying to figure if you're thinking the same thing that I am. So, could we not close the warrant tonight and give people until the fifth?
Tuesday or Tuesday?
And then meet on the fifth and close the warrant there, and that would give us two weeks till the nineteenth?
You don't have enough time for advertising.
Enough time to advertise what?
The warrant.
But we never closed it, it's open, right?
You voted to close it.
As we ask.
You closed it.
No, but with, if you put it out, we couldn't do that.
So...
But you did it!
We tried, but we didn't.
So why hasn't, why hasn't everyone voted to be open?
So, so if, if...
No, we're just voting to close it, is what's on the agenda.
Right, so if we don't, if we don't vote, close it, then it's still open.
It remains open.
And people could still add a petition for another, until the fifth?
No, because you have to advertise it two weeks in advance.
But advertise what two weeks in advance?
The warrant, as signed and closed.
It's already been, it's already been awarded.
So if you're gonna extend it, the timeframe that it's open, we won't have a warrant to publish until the fifth, which then does not give us enough publication time, two weeks before the nineteenth. Because the earliest it can be published, if it's on the night of the fifth, would be the day Thursday, the eighth.
Okay.
In two weeks from Thursday, the eighth is the twenty-second.
Okay, all right.
And that's a tight time frame.
So...
Nice try.
If I'm doing, if I'm looking at my, if I'm looking at my calendar correctly here, Jen, if I'm doing my gazetas, if we open our, if we, close the, I'm not sure the language, but if we open a warrant tonight, then it can stay open, and we can close it on the twelfth. If you've given us seven days, we ain't meeting on a Friday, so if we...
You can, you can tonight set the date to open and close the warrant.
But we have to, right, but we have to have seven days.
About seven days.
So we can't close it until the ninth. We ain't meeting on a Friday, so that means the twelfth.
Correct.
So if I give fourteen days from that, that means we're, the town meeting would be on the twenty-second. That's fourteen days.
No, because the publication won't be on the twelfth. So if you sign it on the twelfth, the earliest is going to be either the fourteenth or the fifteenth. If you sign it on the twelfth, it's gonna be the fifteenth, because it would be Tuesday morning. Two weeks is the twenty-ninth from the fifteenth.
So, do we vote, um, do we vote on the citizen's petition, or is that just de facto, and because it's, it's it, right?
It's petitioned, it's part of the warrant.
That's it.
At some point, we'll be asked to take a position on it.
Right, so, can I ask another question? It seems like there's two people who want to extend it, and two people are okay going forward. What happens then?
Motion fails.
Okay, I'm gonna bring this up, and hopefully this works. So, we just need a call to close the warrant, so we could do it, or we could set a meeting on the night in the morning to close the warrant, which would then give you the twelfth or thirteenth to stop publishing it. That gives us the fourteen days to bring us to the twenty-seventh.
So if you close and sign, it's really, so tonight you could vote to close the warrant on the ninth, and you wanna have a meeting, it's the logistics of signing the warrant, that's what you have to meet. So you would meet on the ninth, when the warrant's closed, sign it.
You could publish it as early as Monday.
It could be Monday or Tuesday, I don't know how Sunday plays into the deadlines. So just say it's Tuesday, now you're at the twenty-seventh.
Which, which we set the twenty-seventh, so we'd have the meeting, which is what we're looking for. So we would just need to have three of us meet on the Friday and the ninth to close the warrant.
And sign it.
It has to be signed.
Yep.
Right. Okay, this is gonna be ugly language, but I'm gonna do the best I can.
Give me one second before we start, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Lost my, lost my own thoughts.
Checking your email, what you hear.
I got thirteen minutes, and I have, I gotta go, so I got, you got my undivided intentions. So, all right, so my motion is to...
You're gonna be there to sign the warrant?
I will, I'll make sure I'm there, right, so I'm, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm making a motion to extend the, most, the, um, keep the warrant open until the ninth, Friday the ninth.
Do you wanna give that a specific time?
Me and Linda can be there by seven-thirty. I gotta need a clock, so...
It's an expat.
It is. So seven-thirty AM on the ninth.
So... If somebody brings in a citizen's petition, they have until seven-thirty AM on the ninth, and it still needs to be certified before, at eight, so you could be meeting at eight-thirty?
But why is it, why does it, why can't it close on the eighth? Can I close on the eighth? And then we meet Friday morning to sign?
That's six days from today.
You're not going back from the original date?
Oh, yeah, yes, if you're just extending it.
I'm extending?
Yes, you can close it.
So close it on the eighth?
Eighth, at two PM.
Doesn't matter.
That's enough time to certify for Friday morning.
Then we could meet actually Thursday night to close, to close the warrant and sign. Just as long as she has enough time to certify, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's my motion.
As long as it's certified by kind of law on Friday morning, that's enough to...
Or by five o'clock on...
On Thursday.
Thursday afternoon.
Cause we're gonna meet Thursday night, if this...
Okay, so that's my...
We'll give them a little more time than, than clerk's office to certify, because if there's five hundred signatures, it takes a long time to...
All right, so Friday morning, so, so we'll, we'll meet on Friday morning at seven-thirty to, to close and sign the warrant?
Well, you could still meet Thursday night, but if you just close it at like ten AM versus two PM, you know?
Okay.
It's impossible, just to give the clerk enough time, so...
All right, so close the warrant, uh...
Ten AM.
Ten AM on Thursday, which means we meet seven o'clock on Thursday night.
Thursday, June eighth?
Yeah.
At seven.
Yeah.
But I could sign that on Friday morning. I don't have to be there to sign it at that moment.
We just need, we just need three of us to close it and sign it, and we can sign it on Friday morning.
Well, we need three of us Thursday night.
Right, okay, so my motion, as clear as it can be?
So your motion is to keep the warrant open until June eighth at ten AM?
Yeah.
And to have a BOS meeting on Thursday, June eighth, at seven PM to sign the warrant?
Yep, and then that moves the, that moves the town meeting to the twenty, it could be the twenty-sixth. If you can publish it on the twelfth, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. We could still have it on the twenty-sixth, if you can publish it on the twelfth. We're giving you, I'm giving them two days, right?
I can't confirm that for sure at this moment. You can make the motion pending...
Can I make it?
Confirmation of publication date to hold the meeting on the twenty-sixth or the twenty-seventh.
What was the next date? And that's a Tuesday?
Why is the ten AM on Thursday so critical? Why can't it be later in the day?
To give the clerk enough time to certify any...
Before the closing, okay.
Before closing.
All right, so that gives the clerk...
So we, so, all right, so we set the town meeting for the twenty-seventh?
Twenty-seventh? And that's a Tuesday?
That's a Tuesday.
Ask a question again?
Please.
What, so, question about this, I know that there's, um, I know people don't wanna feel rushed. I also know I don't wanna spend an extra three million dollars because we missed a submission, because we don't have fall meeting, because we have to wait an extra year, or whatever these, these delays are compounding happen to be. So I'm wondering, Kevin, is, do we know, I mean, is, is a one-week delay that...
You gotta have it, you, you have, you have to have the submission, what, a week before their board meeting or something? There's a drop-in that's predicated on their next board meeting, but that oughta be enough time.
Really, I can't, probably, I don't know, probably, I don't know.
So your motion is...
We're still far off, yeah.
I second that motion.
Okay, so...
Okay, now, before we go further with that, your motion is now to keep the current, the current warrant open?
Yeah.
Until ten AM on the sixth?
No, the eighth.
On the eighth. Wait a minute, I just jumped ahead here.
Ten AM. Nice, bright and early in the morning, give us time to eat to the beach, Jen.
On the eighth. Now, that will accomplish what in terms of the period of time that the warrant has been open? Total number of days?
Cause it's more than seven.
Eleven.
And that will be from the moment that we did something we couldn't do?
From the twenty-fourth.
Okay. So what we tried to do, we couldn't do, and we've now left it open not only seven, but an additional time, so it's now a total of eleven days, to cure a defect for something that we couldn't do.
Okay.
Are we satisfied that our defect will have been cured?
Do you not have to vote to reopen it since you closed it last week?
Because we couldn't do, we didn't close it, because we couldn't do it.
But you did it!
No, we couldn't, we tried.
But I don't think it was valid, it wasn't valid.
It wasn't valid, couldn't do it. That's the point I keep taking, we had not closed it because we couldn't. It has been pointed out that we didn't do it. Our defect was, we, we, we looked likely, likely, like we closed it, but we didn't. Therefore, it has indeed been open all of this time. And it turns out, the one thing which has been screwed up is because we appeared to have closed it when we didn't. People may have thought that it was closed, but those people who wanted to support, that wanted to put in a petition have apparently stepped forward and done that. So as far as we can tell, we haven't really not permitted someone to put in a petition, because we could've done that tonight. But we are now going to extend this until the eighth, at ten AM in the morning, should someone else have a burning yearning to get a hundred signatures around a petition.
Sure.
Last comment.
I have a question, you, you brought up earlier whether a citizen's petition that was already filed, they, it's already set for town meeting, would have to be somehow redone if the date of town meeting, that changes. Do you have an expressive opinion about that, or, or...
I'm, what, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't understand the question. There has been a citizen's complaint.
No, 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 I'm asking a question. Article, uh, number two in your warrant?
Yes.
Has, has a date of town meeting for the ninth?
That was a question I asked before. Will, are we content that they will not have to redo a process which they have already done in anticipation of this town meeting, which we've now changed?
My, my question, and request is for the board to hear that themselves, and say, who, who, who... If any of the articles that are already on the warrant would be, uh, it's whatever extended, I wrote it right.
And hopefully, the motion will include the fact that any citizen, citizen petitioned articles which have been received within this period will be assumed and certified. Assumed will have been submitted properly for the town meeting to be held on the...
Twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh.
So I'm, I'm at, so I'm adding that to my motion.
So, okay?
Whatever citizens petitions have already been filed, verified, we don't...
Now, we already know that should, should there be a technical reason, we can't do that...
Somebody will let us know.
Somebody will let us know, because already, we have done something we couldn't do, and had agreed we couldn't do it, and have tried to fix it. By accepting a, set a petition, a petitioned article which maybe we can't automatically accept, we would hope you will support us citizens as we accept it anyway.
Um, you might have to technically, that meeting exists at the nineteenth, you might have to open or close that officially, like three people, that can't just be dissolved, but that's how that would be handled. It would have three people, excuse me, the town clerk, board chair, and the third person. Let's say there's a snowstorm, you have to actually close the meeting. You might have to do that, but that special citizen's petition should not necessarily be for a specific date. The one that they submitted should go into that, at whatever the next special town meeting is going to be.
So, so what I, what I, my language, I guess, what I'll add to that is, on my motion, is that we will accept all citizens petition as long as it has been certified that weekend. Is that, is that clear enough?
Yes, if you look at our next, the soonest special town meeting that is held. Because someone could actually do one three months ago, whenever that meeting came up is when that sys, um, special petition, citizen's petition, sorry, would be. So you can just move it, it's really not for a date, it's for a special town meeting, whatever it's called.
So I think...
That helps.
I think I've done that.
Yeah.
Okay, and we would hope that interpretation is correct, thank you.
Yeah, I spoke to someone today, and they kind of gave me that perspective.
So, please, repeat your motion.
It might be different than what I'm, all right, so, um, my motion is to keep the current, um, special town, uh...
Warrant open.
Warrant open until, uh, June...
Eight. Nishan, do you want to read it back to you as I...
Yeah, why don't you read it back to me?
To keep the current warrant for the special town meeting open until ten AM on June eighth, and the BOS will meet on Thursday, June eighth, at seven PM to sign the warrant, and hold the town meeting on June twenty-seventh, and all citizen's petitions filed thus far are valid for the June twenty-seventh meeting.
Can you repeat what time we're gonna meet to get this signed?
Seven PM. On Thursday, June eighth.
So, it's been seconded?
I seconded it.
Further discussion? Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I oppose.
If the court, please repeat the motion, because I, we couldn't hear it out here, I couldn't hear it at least.
Just need to get their votes.
Regarding the timeframe that...
I need to get their votes.
Please.
I, I will support the motion, 3 to 1.
So the motion, Kyle, is to keep the current...
Why don't we have it read loud?
Yeah.
Motion reads, to keep the current STM warrant open until 10 a.m. on June 8th, and the BOS meet Thursday, June 8th at 7:00 p.m. to sign warrant, and hold a town meeting on June 27th. All citizen's petition filed thus far are valid for the June 27th town meeting.
Will be considered valid.
Would I apologize ahead of time to the school committee and the finance committee for moving the town meeting?
You did the right thing.
They can yell at me. I've been yelling that before, so...
Phil, will you hold your June 19th, are you at the board selectmen's meeting now?
I've been sitting here pondering that. We have a, we have a scheduled selectmen's meeting for the day before. I think the...
You had one planned for the 19th, which was then canceled because you added the town meeting, so we hold the June 19th meeting as planned, just a regular BOS meeting?
I guess so, yeah. We can confirm that, we'll do it next Monday.
Meeting Monday?
Meeting Monday, the 5th, yes. And we will, we will take as one of our items, a response to an open meeting law violation issue. Unless it is withdrawn in the meantime.
Hold on, are we, we're not done, are we?
No, I have to adjourn.
Chairman, could you speak to the ICAM situation? I just spoke a little, he will have this on YouTube tomorrow. One of the problems this past week, people couldn't refer to replays until, just yesterday happened. So in other words, I think there'll be a lot more people there tonight.
I think you're probably right.
So, tomorrow, is that right? Probably on YouTube tomorrow, and on ICAM whenever they get squared away.
Okay, so look for the tape of this meeting, can I hardly wait to review it, on YouTube tomorrow. Any other business to come for the meeting tonight?
Yeah, I, so what I, we don't have to talk about this tonight if we want to decide to talk about it on Monday, but I want to come up with a better plan on how we're going to talk about this town meeting, and how we want to, to explain it or do public outreach on it. I don't want to just sit back and go, well, it's up to all of us to tell people, we need to have, I'd like to have a plan that's either jointly set up with the school committee and the school building committee, or whether it's, you know, a letter to the paper, or something, because I think that some people will, I know some people just assume that it's just Doian and that's it. Some people could read this and go, well, we're just going to offer $250,000, not recognizing the, you know, kind of the actual reality of what this vote means.
You raised, I think, a good issue to do something more intentional, formal, to communicate to the citizenry. Would you take it upon yourself between now and Monday to do the best you can to coordinate with the school committee and others, and come up with some recommendations that we could consider?
I will, and one more question. How, one of my, I don't think it's a concern, but we have two different articles that I think many people feel like they sort of compete with each other, in some case, I'm not entirely sure, but I'm trying to figure out what, you know, what happens if, if we do Article 1 first, two-thirds pass, and then we go to Article 2, then what happens if a majority of people somehow vote that up? Then everyone's going to go, well, what, what does this mean?
Where are we?
Where are we? So I don't really know if or how we couch that discussion, if we kind of, you know, and I don't know if we need to work with the town moderator or something on that, but I, I'm not quite sure, you know, I think that some people may, I know, some people will vote no on Article 1 to vote yes on Article 2, but I guess I'm not really sure what...
Oh, I understand completely.
I don't know how to go about and bring that, I think people are going to be asking those questions, right?
I'm sure they will.
So I don't know how we do that in the meeting so that it's done smoothly.
And if the town meeting appropriates a quarter of a million bucks, I assume that the Doian research and investigation will go forward using that money. In the meantime, if they also ask the school committee to revisit another set of proposals, then I would hope the school committee would give some attention to other proposals. Isn't democracy awful? But I think there is no way to enforce a particular outcome given what we are going into that meeting with. I think that the implications should be understood and clearly communicated. If, if no money is appropriated to further investigate the Doian location, and correct me, Kevin, if I'm wrong, it will be difficult to further investigate that location. And if we are not further investigating it, it will make it difficult to continue discussion negotiations with the Massachusetts School Building Assistance Authority about that option. So that essentially takes that option off the table. That's a clear result. Now, if everybody's enthusiastic about both articles, then the school building committee and the, and the school committee will have to assert that they have made decisions that they're going to stick by. And then there will be a final vote, as I understand it, which will ultimately be needed to vote a bond or a temporary financing pattern, maybe bands or something, if the full project is to go forward.
Yes, you have to vote to, yes, for, after the funding agreement is complete, yes, we have to have a town meeting election to fund it, but also just to literally know that if Article 2 is successful, and someone, and it will decide to go on that measure, we would need more money again, probably do more than $25,000. So that's just, it would be a whole other...
But that's a whole other issue. Right now, right now, the, by voting that, that doesn't, that doesn't solve or change a whole lot. Voting no on Doian changes a lot.
Yeah, I'm just trying to say that if voting yes on Article 2 does have a financial ramifications later down the road, we would need more money to do that also, unfortunately, because there is no, everything submitted to the MSBA is based on 775, there is no 420 building sitting in a drawer that we can pull out and submit, we have to, it has to be designed, and obviously that costs money.
So, so I guess I will work with school committee and other groups, and we can try to explain the relationship between...
I think there are two issues. One is to communicate effectively in the short period of time that there is a special town meeting?
Yeah.
And there are two articles on the agenda, and that is what I think I understood you to be most concerned about, that people not be surprised that such a thing is going to happen.
Right.
How that result, or what the result of that meeting is, how that's interpreted will depend in part on how the articles are presented, how they're voted, and I'm not sure that you can micromanage the final results of a town meeting.
Sure, right, okay.
But the clearer it's explained, the better. Sir?
May I also ask that, as we were working with the school building committee and school committee on that measure, what has been missing to us, for most of this process, is the voice of the selectmen and the finance committee in terms of trying to educate the public of what the issues are? And I would urge the selectmen, in whatever way you see fit, help with spreading the word. And I would also urge the word, that request of both the finance committee as well, the more the better. Last two town meetings are proof positive that when people scepter the microphone and you could cut the silence from the other boards with a knife. And I think it would go a long way in helping to move this project along if we had more unified voice going forward in terms of what the message is, in terms of what we're asking them to do, that's all.
I have one more question. Can, since we reopened it, can current, can this petition that's here, could that be modified? No, no. So, no, they can't, could they resubmit something entirely?
That has to be on, that petition right there will be on the warrant, no matter...
They could ask that this be postponed and substituted.
And substitute something else?
But this will stay on the warrant.
Okay, okay.
They could then decide that they're going to, they won't remove it at town meeting, they could ask to postpone it.
That's what I think.
And they could have a seminar, they cannot take that off.
Okay, okay.
Another 100 signatures will get to another...
I just have one last question, it's more to Jim. Will there be a message that goes out to the other committees about the change of dates?
As soon as we get out of here.
What's that, sorry?
No, about informing the school committee.
Send an email, send us...
It's been moved and seconded, that we adjourn. Any further business to come before the meeting tonight? As always, with this, with this, this is about as informed a group and discussion as this board has participated in, and we appreciate it. Thank you, thank you for being here.